To bring you up to date a little bit on uh. November thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, the town board did approve to go ahead with a solar project. It was a question of funding after that. So the question isn't whether we are gonna do it. It's a question of, you know, where the funds are coming from and whether we will. And whether Mike Mark will have some additional information on. I know that you're on the loop on some of all the discussion.
So full of stuff to all that.
That's it. Mark logs on. I'll answer. Yeah. Well, if recording is in progress, it looks like the clock says about one minute before six o'clock. Uh, this is a work session for the battle, the town battleground uh. October twenty-seventh uh made this meeting be called the order. All the counselors are present. Any changes to the agenda other than taking the topics in the first four uh. Top of the top. First four items and we have time to get to anything else after that. Great. Um, with that said, uh. Financial advisor introduce yourself and make your opening statement. And be be aware, we are on national television.
That's a lot of pressure. My name is Bob Reynolds. I'm with LWG CPAs and advisors. Um. I I'm here to help you guys out on your couple of different sewer projects that you have. Um. I really came up today to just. Answer questions about the financing, kind of how all that can will work and so forth. I really don't have a big presentation to give or anything. It's. Just from India, it's only about an hour drive. I've never been here, so I thought it was worth coming up to the meeting in case you guys had questions and. I was finding it easier being in person than the Zoom thing. It's.
Yeah.
It's always a struggle.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Tom?
Bob.
Bob.
And don't feel like you have to have questions.
That's cool. Well, I guess not till we get to the mini career. I don't know what to ask.
Well, they they have two engagement letters that we have in front of them here. One is for their financial municipal advisable. And the other one is strictly clothing rates, which dovetails with the conservancies rate study.
Okay. Yes, yeah. So that's for advisory services for the financing. So that's gonna be us being your advisor on. Whether or not you should go with the SRF, should we look for other sources? Structuring the debt, the best way to pay for the debt and so forth. And then the rate. Engagement letter is just for the rates in general, because there will be a rate component that that goes with this.
So the engagement letter is. Saying that we're gonna retain your services.
Alright.
Basically.
Correct, yes.
And then. The. Sewer rate study is.
Yeah, and we, the reason we have to do two separate ones is because the SEC requires for the advisory services, because that's all on the umbrella of the SNC. It's all a specific engagement letter. It was ten years ago before that was rules. We would have just had one, but we have to break it off now.
And so. I thought some information that you may. Well, George sent out a letter, but I didn't see any of the rate studies, the 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 breakouts. Had you done that? But I I saw something. No. I can't. Uh, I have to look it up.
Okay.
Uh. What's your turn around, Tom? You've given us a rate.
For rate, the rate study?
Yeah.
Usually about thirty to forty-five days. Um, it will probably be a little less than that, because we do have all the information. Um, we've kind of already started it to start doing some of the looking at. The impacts for this uh financing.
And so I saw some letter that it had four different scenarios.
Yes.
That was with respect to the U M H.
Yes.
Financing my gateway.
Oh. That's. That's the project. Yes.
And that's, that's where you have a committee to work with Eric Burns, your attorney. And if there's questions that you have about that, now's the time to ask. Bob, while he's here, or. He can give me answers to. Send back to you. But we want to um leave that negotiation when your attorney can be here.
Sure. And I can also be at the committee meeting to 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 really discuss that as well.
And that is. Andrew and.
I was thinking Chad.
Oh, you say, uh, I think it's Chad too. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
I know I opened my mouth.
Yeah, those are just some preliminary numbers we kind of put together for that kind of conversation discussion.
We're looking about five grand to do the race study.
Yeah.
I think you do it.
I think so.
Yeah, I was in the right, I mean, that's.
Now, I think since that we need to sign it, right? The agreements.
If there's no objections or further study needed, it was.
Yes, I think we can go ahead and do that.
Uh, we would need a motion to do that, and we can't do that in a work session. Oh.
Wow, actually. This is.
Listening.
This is advertised. It has an agenda.
Uh, but it's advertised as a work session. I don't. If Eric burns, we could have asked for clarification. Sure, there's an agenda.
It's a public meeting.
I think we'd be okay.
I would feel much more comfortable having.
There's. Fine, yeah. From our, from my viewpoint, if you wanna wait to.
And actually.
Absolutely fine. It's, we're not gonna stop and work.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're.
Well, I emailed Eric earlier just for clarification and. Seeing how it's work session topics. I'm sorry, I mean, that sort of defines what this meeting is about. Can we say now? Uh. Get no motions or votes or any kind of binding. So. Any other questions for? Bob?
Would you be able to do it with this, just the? The great impact for two thousand gallons with that thing that was sent out? I guess I'm not. I can talk to my wife about it. She's an accountant, but. Uh, I would, I would rather just hear from you, like, what I'm looking at, make sure that I'm not thinking about this incorrectly. Would you mind just kind of give me like a thousand foot?
Yeah, so.
What we're looking at there?
So, so what what that summary does is it 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 looks at. Kind of a couple of different scenarios. For how the financing and how all this could break down. Um. And and it really just kind of looks at how much of the funding the town versus the developer. Is going to be responsible for. Uh. And then it also breaks it down into two types of terms. This is a twenty-year term and a thirty-year term. So, for instance, um, if you look, and and then there's also two different types of pledges. So the first kind of. Section is just really looking at, it says the only pledge to pay repay these bonds comes from the net revenues of your sewer utility. So what that means, it's your sewer utility revenues, less operating expense, that's your net revenues available for it. The second piece to this brings into an equation that tip revenues that you have available also are helped and used to pay for the debt service on the bonds. Uh, so then we kind of ran through this through a couple of different scenarios. Um. And really what we came, what what it shows is the impact for two thousand, three thousand, and four thousand gallons. The reason we kept the, you you may average user is right around that three thousand gallons. The reason I showed the four thousand gallons is because. There's been talk about taking this to the SRF and four thousand gallons is kind of their. That's their number that they like to look at. So I really wanted to, in case we. Had that number available. Um. So really what it shows. Is your current rate. And in the middle column, it shows what the estimated increase would be and then the 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 right column.
Time I just remember. Well, I I I don't have that graph.
It's a.
Yeah.
That was sent to us.
This was, we, the plan was to talk about this in.
Committee.
In the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to not get into too much detail on it.
Right. No, that's fine. I just.
Yeah.
I just wanna verify that's what we're getting at.
Yeah.
Jim, why do you want to see that? Where where'd that come from?
Came from my file. Cause I was.
That's a sword. That's a sword.
Well, that's.
And and what you're seeing. Here, kind of their column, the percentage increase. So that's the increase to all users of the utility. And then you can kind of see in those middle columns what the dollar increase would be. And and the idea here. This is just showing across the board, you've increased for all rate pairs. Now, we can, there's other ways we can do this and look at this. This was just kind of a starting point.
Sure, okay.
Um, you, we could start, we could look at what's called like a debt service charge that maybe. I I know this is the area where there's potential development, so as development occurs, we could shift more of that to those zone areas and so forth. Uh. But I think that that's all more conversation for the.
Right, and that's why I wanted to verify. So.
Yeah.
That, thank you.
Yep.
I love that you're on.
Just make sure no one looking at. That's all I've got. That's the only question I have.
Yeah.
That counts.
There's no more questions.
Is there nothing?
Okay, uh, you're. You guys all, I'm gonna leave you. Get everyone here my contact information, my card, so. If after the meeting, any member has. A question, you can give them a call or email.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
You.
This we say you come down.
Oh, absolutely. This is. This is my easy drive this week. I have to go down to Jose County on Mon, on Wednesday, which is. Uh, whenever I ask where it says, all the way into heel. I have to go as far as I can go and still be in the state of Indiana and not. That's a pretty drive.
Yeah, it is.
Starting the day in the office, because that's a day in the week. So, yeah, thank you, everyone. Appreciate you guys having me on here.
Nice meeting you, Bob.
Alright, thank you.
Well, let's say on the counter.
Okay.
Or. If I can really contact you.
Uh, I, was this someone packed it all along? I'm just gonna see, was it the very end?
Yeah.
It's very simple.
Okay. Thank you.
Gateway Bot Agreement. Oh, maybe we should wait until Georgie is back.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think you all have seen the draft public private agreement between the town and Bowen. For the. B O T program on the gateway gateway regional sewer. Um, basically, I wanted to. Get to the point to see if anybody had any additional questions that we needed to go over, any. Changes we need to make, clarifications that we need to make. Eric and his team have reviewed it. They had a few comments that we incorporated into this document that you have, so it was. Um.
So we're much, much closer than.
From our end, it's, if you guys don't have any comments, it's ready for execution. It's ready for finalization from the town, so then we can then send it to Bowen for them to execute. And finalize the dream between parties. Uh, I will say, in terms of. Where we're looking for schedule, pumps are scheduled to arrive late November. Um. Probably needs to have this finalized at your November meeting, so Bowen doesn't have any. Changes that need to be made to that schedule, so we can get the pumps installed as soon as possible. Um, we'd like to make sure we give them proper time to review and make comment as needed. I wanted to get your blessing before we sent that.
Has everybody had the time to really look this over?
I looked at it as best I could. Does that make sense?
I understand completely.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, it's. There's a lot of detail.
Yeah.
Uh. I would like to get together with you and I have. Several notes that I'd like to understand a little.
Are any of those ones you can go over now, or does it, we need to have a separate meeting? It's fine if we do.
We can do it now. I would, I, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, fine.
I'd like to just let them know.
I have a copy right here, so if you tell me what page to what.
Well, I'm starting on page nine, okay?
Copy the entire document again for the council, so you know, I have to ask people. What is it you're referring to, this, that was.
And and a lot of it's just uh not being acquainted with terminology and whatever. So on, on page nine, uh, I get unauthorized alien. I finally got that. You're not that alien. I mean, you're talking about. Immigrants that you don't have green cards or. Whatever.
Any good.
Um. To see, uh, uh, general obligations, cost of performance, what? What does that? Um. You know, all obligations, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take about each part shall be performed at the cost. Of. Explicitly agreed here and bear all portion of us. I mean, that seemed a little vague. I don't know, it just, I. I just had a hard time understanding.
We're gonna do our own stuff that we're responsible for, the town, Bowen. So it's the cost of doing the obligations out of this contractor included. In whatever guaranteed maximum price that they give you as scope and work and fee for, it's all inclusive.
Yeah. And then under.
Partnering together in per, in terms of you're gonna do this and mine's gonna come out here with a backhoe and hold that over while we do our work. That's not. How this is gonna work.
Yeah, good. And under D of that same part. Uh. You know, at, oh, the owner being the town, uh, at cost unexpensive, I'm sure that there are utility services only joining through the, in the joining. Public right of ways. So how do we, how do we know? That there are services available? I don't know. It just seemed like an unknown that could creep in that the town could incur that cost. Of providing services. Sorry.
This is robust. Um, and this is as much to protect the contractor from their perspective as it is, you know, the town. So both sides need to be protected. We understand where the risk is. This is. I, I don't wanna say it, but it's not gonna be needed, because the work they're doing is not like they're building a building and they're relying on. Electric to be three phase and this and that. We've already vetted these issues, so. There should not be any risk to the town for the scope of work that we're gonna be contemplating on this. But should we decide to build a town hall as an add-on to this and GMP number five? That would come into play, because we may have to buy different utilities to that particular site. We've already got the site for this project identified, and they're not going to. The only utility they're building is yours. So we know the sewer services there. Any electric that they need. We're designing that as a part of the the project. So.
There shouldn't be any undesigned utilities included.
Yes. Uh, just. As I'm going through it, I was just raising, I've seen it.
I'll, I'll point out too, while you're on page nine, two A. You see where it says insert dollar mountain blue?
Yeah.
Every GMP that you would add to this master agreement would update that spot right there. I go, it's zero right now, but we're working on GMP number one, which probably shouldn't be true that your November meeting and pumps are coming in at the end of November. So that the phase one of installing the pumps and doing the other work around lift station can happen as those come in.
Right.
Or we can at least T Bowen up to come in as soon thereafter as they're scheduled.
And I saw a quote of whatever it was, two hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
Or good day on some good. Was that in their package?
That agreement. Yes, now that.
This one.
When you get around, they're talking about that, that can happen, I'll say as well.
Yeah, that's. That's a draft of GMP number one.
Right.
So that's the next step after approving the agreement with Bowen themselves. There is no scope of work until we add. GMP number one, and we will probably put a cover letter or additional information with that, and that gets amended into this document and it's the F. And then we'll update the cost throughout if we go forward for life of this.
It depends on what is the one we're at. And, yeah, I feel kind of. Everybody who doesn't have a copy is, you're going from your, it's kind of a disadvantage here a little bit. Okay, on two E.
Well, I've got the up here, if you could possibly see that.
Band of. Uh.
Okay.
We're recall, we are required to um permit. Permit fees? I mean, is that?
Any permits that you would grant for the project? This is saying that you would either waive it or reduce it. There shouldn't be any promise that you're in.
Just. I didn't know if it was building permits or who was, I, I just wasn't. Was it clear on it?
Page ten.
On page ten.
E. Uh, there.
And. On F, I appreciate to all the definitions in the beginning of understanding the terms, but there is no project in balance. Uh. That, to me, that wasn't, there's different ways to interpret that. Uh, project and balance, uh, balance of.
You don't get upside down. If you get a, a home construction loan that wasn't a permanent, you don't approve a change order that goes beyond your approval on that. That's how I read that, Jim.
It'd be good to add that to the definitions for for whatever, okay?
Um, in the accounting world, it might be more their normal jargon, but. That's how I, that's. A non-financial person.
Uh, going on to the five D, uh, right of entry, um. Does that mean entry on the? A- any part? I mean, right of entry into the construction zone? I'm not sure.
Yes.
And uh, does all of that have to be specified beforehand? Or is that part of the GMP?
So the step of the notice received will happen at some point after the GMP, when we have the easements or have the rights of entry or other things. Be able to have access to a site. So that'll. It says after the issuance of those proceed. You're giving them the green light.
Yeah.
You can get on the land.
And so further down, it says substantial completion date. Um. And I saw, I don't know if there was a term for substantial completion date. Um. You know, if there was a defining term or substantial, yeah, it comes. But. That doesn't say, that's. Yeah.
Based on schedule.
Based on schedule.
Based on schedule.
They agree upon.
I'll be agreed upon, scheduled. Okay, um. Part E on that, owner may at its cost retain the owner's representative or advisors prior to or during the period of development or to consult with and advise the owner. The owner, we are the owner. Uh. What do you think about that group?
Part of the RPR.
Is what?
Uh, like our inspector essentially.
Yes.
See, what I would say is, I mean.
Yes.
The. You either can use a third party or reach out to these guys for their RPR. Typically, you want the, I mean, from my experience, when I was an RPR, we always, when I was at Westler. We designed a project, we had our own rot, resident project rep to go behind between the owner and the contractor and. Engineer, so.
I would advocate for a third party. And the reason is that, you know, BFNS are the engineers of record. They are working with. Bowen. But.
They're, they're working for us. They're, they're working for us. They're working for us. Bowen, B N F, BFNS is working for us.
Yeah, BF.
There are. They're, they're working for the town on this project.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I hear you on that, but um. I feel more comfortable having a third party, but that's.
You're probably gonna get into a whole lot more costs with that.
Yeah.
And then they're gonna have.
Okay, now we're getting into the weeds here a little bit.
They'll have to get up to speed on.
Sorry, guys, I'm gonna bring up Hawks Nest. You had the engineers on that. That project was greedily. You know, Chris, you talked with me several times, or at least once, where. The the pothole in and the locates, that was kind of standard procedure. I don't know why the town. That didn't apply to the town, okay? And why? That has been a major problem with it, one of the major problems with the holdup to Hawks Nest, the Hawks Nest. And. I just seem like just a conflict of interest.
I think it was a learning tool on all of our parts.
For us, absolutely on our part, but these guys are the experts. They should have got, been invited enough.
But we weren't empowered to do that.
For what, for Hawks Nest?
What?
We did not lead the procurement for Hawks Nest. We didn't hire, help you hire Jamie though. We didn't have a chance to put this together.
Right. So in other words, we just flew blind and when, when, when we came up with an agreement with Greg Marks and.
Well, and again, it's a learning. Tool. I mean, we were all brand new with all this. This time, and we thank you for being so. Good about reading through that so thoroughly, because it. We've learned a lot, so we wanna ask those questions.
Well, I think the best one, the first thing said is this prevent expo then and us.
Yes.
From. Basically, what we were into this last time.
What we're doing.
Right. Well, I think, I think it's a good thing we have, it's like.
Oh, this?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Like, it's a lot of legal needs, but I think it it helps. Both parties.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm, I'm to the point at this and. Who's? Who's overseeing it? And then then a third party? You know, and it. BFNS is. I mean, they, it's like they have a vested interest in this. They got a million dollars in it, you know? So I'm, I'm just. You know?
We have a vested interest in making sure the project was built, even executed correctly. Us and the RPRs.
Their reputation lies on how they do this job.
It's what?
Their reputation lies on exactly how they do this job.
So with Hawks Nest, I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah.
So we've been getting our balls bashed in for Hawks Nest for a lot of shit, but it's. It was outside of what we were doing. So I mean, that's same with these guys, so.
Well, you're right. There were no drawing.
We had drawings. We had drawings. Were there construction drawings, but we didn't have any, any act, I won't even say act, we didn't have any accurate drawings. Or existing infrastructure that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You didn't have any accurate drawings for the sewer.
We can't put it on them. We can't put it on rock and dirt. I mean, really, we, you know, we. Can't really put it on the town, but we can, it's a serum structure. So the reality of it is, okay. It should have went back to figuring out and saying, oh, hey, we got a lot of money that we need to put into this and. Clear the woods like we did and go through there and suck holes and bind the ship. I mean, that's. Yeah. This guy can't do his job if he doesn't, you know, doesn't have the. Knowledge and.
Drawings.
So.
You, you guys should really be upset with Greg Marks then.
Can we just focus on? This project we. You want to talk about Hawks Nest, get in on the menu, and we're gonna score our whole time.
Well, and that's why I was reluctant a little bit to get into it, but everybody said, okay, let's talk about it.
Well, yes.
Need to get to, need to get this project moving or.
Disagrees doesn't define who the. Owner's representative is.
I want to.
What some of them.
Doesn't it?
Right.
What the owners of rippers.
The owner's representative during construction, your onsite inspector.
Yes.
We advocate for it to be us as designers.
Yes.
You want it to be a third party. This contract does not establish shoe daddy as one of them.
And I don't think that our. Cost profile could have any presence.
Um, inspection was included in the cost estimates for the project.
For the project, but.
It is not included. There's not a cost associated with that, with your agreement with us.
Yeah.
Is a placeholder for it. In terms of to be decided.
That's a separate agreement from what we have worked on so far, but you say it is in the overall cost. That's a separate agreement from what we have worked on so far, but you say it is in the overall cost.
It's programmed into the overall cost estimate, yes. Now that's based on the estimate of what it would take for our.
Them to do it, not somebody else, sure.
And so when we get to that point, then we can make the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just speak from previous experience. Typically it is best to go with the design team because they know what the intent was and such, so I mean, that's just something that.
For efficiency.
Yes, a hundred percent. I'll make a point to some of the comments in the GMP number one, there's some value engineering that Bowen has brought up as ideas. We would strongly advocate that you put the engineer record involved in these minimum in those conversations and say, yeah, that's a good idea. Or no, you can't do that because of X, Y, and Z in the design.
I hear you on that, but you know, our prior experience with Hawks Nest has colored my thinking tremendously.
We've all, I mean, we've been here every meeting, Jim.
Um, I know.
And we care because Hawks Nest is important to us too, and.
But that's only from the engineering point of view, you know, it's, in any case, uh.
I mean, I've acted as your representative.
I know.
There are things I would not have been there for to help work through.
And that's why it was so wacky, who is responsible, you know? I've asked that question.
Stated in the agreement.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure I think it's good that happens now because I mean, it's. Who cares about what is definitely, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I have no idea how much longer this is taking, we're gonna be at it by seven o'clock. Page twelve, top of the section I, you talk about lay down areas and station areas, has that been defined?
No.
No, uh, when does that happen?
It'll happen during design, we'll work with Ron, we'll work with the town to determine what areas are allowable for them to stage. With this, you have some feedback from Bowen on the size of lay down area that they would need, so it's a collaborative effort to determine that.
Effective close location. I think we probably have a fairly defined on GMP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Further down, uh, section M, commissioning talks about, uh, wh- what the, the test. Can we have a list of all the different?
Testifications for the project will define what testing needs to be performed for each section of work, whether that's force main pressure testing. Whether it's vacuum testing for manholes and other structures like that.
And startup procedures for manufacturer.
And that will be added in later.
That'll be clearly defined in.
Yeah, okay.
Each other, full section.
And all of that will be defined, uh, moving on page fifteen, uh, you look like it's a part A, uh. There's gonna be three GMP reports, it's, it looks like.
We're projecting there are three, based on three phases to the project.
And there's no time tentative timeline potentially still in that yet, uh, for what, uh, uh, GMP reports.
When they're coming or how long going?
Well, they, I mean, the first ones, uh, December or January first, next one six months later, I don't.
Well, you're a little bit in charge of that, about how fast you wants to go. GMP drafted, GMP number one in draft form is been delivered and can be ready for your November meeting. GMP number two, we can push, but we need permits for that, we need easements for that, there's a lot longer, uh.
And all of those permits are not extra costs that are better, but okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. Over on, um. Let's see, sixteen, it looks like it's section four. Unknowns, change orders, underground facilities, stuff that, you know, you try to anticipate as much as possible, but. Undiscoverables, I mean. I just have a question, you know, if they do their due diligence, there should be no issue whatsoever.
Well, there always is. I haven't been on a project yet, but there's not something that does a lot.
Right.
Do it for thirty-five years now, so.
There's always gonna be some.
I have been on, I have not been on one project yet, working for myself or somebody else, that we haven't had something that's.
So during design, we do our best, we work with Ron, we work with all the other utility owners in the area to identify the utilities in the project. What did not happen on the previous one is the subsurface utility investigations that will be performed in this project. We are contracted to do that. They're digging potholes, we're finding these, we're putting eyes on them, getting materials, confirming, we're getting sizes, we're getting depths and elevations.
Yes, I'm feeling, I, I hear you, I understand.
There's a seventy year old tile on the ground that nobody has any record of and it's uncovered. And the farmer says, I need that tile to be repaired, that's.
Okay, moving on to, uh, H seventeen, um, bottom of seventeen sixteen, H seven. Projects, uh, office, um, is there gonna be an onsite office here?
A lot of times for some projects of scale like this, the contractor will maintain a job site trailer. Uh, that's where they've got an office for some of their folks, and they may need to add all design development documents there. For easy reference for anybody from town who visits, engineer who visits.
And that's what I was asking about, so. As it comes, as it goes along, they will have a, a job site office with all those documents.
It's likely they probably will.
Okay.
If we go for all three phases, I'd say Bowen will have them, but for this little bit, no.
These ones not proposed enough and for two and three, very likely.
Is there a built in percentage of the GMPs or unknowns, uh, whatever?
There's a contingency that's always kept in each of those GMPs. Contingency usage should be defined in this on who gets to determine when a contingency is used. That's referred to as the owner's contingency, so they can't dip into contingency funds about written approval from the owner, you know, you know.
And, uh, moving on to page twenty-one, uh, G on the second page, I don't know what number it is. I think, I think in the original information is about how many subs, is he, does Bowen use subs?
Yeah.
And, um. I assume that they're all vetted and everything's done, board, above board, whatever, okay, and, okay, um.
Yeah, they're all covered under Bowen's blanket as well, so they're just as much responsibility.
And so on. On, on thirteen, observation, um. But upon reasonable written notice deli- delivered to developer, which notice shall specify the portion of the construction to be observed. Assuming that you are the observers on the job, uh, you will observe all. All, all portions and you don't have to notify them of what. Of what you're gonna observe presumably.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to, uh, fourteen dispersments, um. I wasn't clear on this, um, so. Who's getting the bot? Is Bowen getting the bot?
That's what this does.
Yeah.
We've selected them.
So. Who's in charge of the versment of funds? If they're, I mean, according to this.
Is it paying Bowen?
Yeah. So they're in, so they, they're in charge of paying themselves. That we're paying them. But I thought you just said that they were in charge of, of the bot funds.
Town is in charge of the bot.
Okay. So they come to us, they send us a bill?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, do you know that Georgia?
I am not sure that's a hundred percent. Because if you have a bond. There will be someone between us and the bond. And we request distribution of bond funds, but I don't write a check directly from the bond. For example, with the sewage plant, New York Mellon Bank is the bond executor. And I pay them every month. And they pay SRF, but in the beginning, they held the bond, we told them, we authorized this distribution. Of this amount and they wrote the check to Bowen.
And, okay, I'm reading this here, it says, our request that the dispersment agent, really trusty.
That's what you guys like to let us know.
We'll recommend to you, here's the monthly bill for Bowen for this amount of money on these specific items. And then you request the dispersment from who actually has the cash.
And that's where we said, they have a percentage of work completed for different sections and then they'd say, yes, we agree with that, no, we don't agree with that. And then when they're doing work, should they have an inspector there too of their own? Like a quality assurance inspector?
Finance company or who? You talking about Bowen?
Yeah, they're not, well.
They have, they got their own QC people that will be, they hit the site from time.
Their own, like their own inspector when they.
They're not there full time, but yes, they do.
Okay.
Quality control.
So that at the end of it, if they don't use the entire bond. Then we have to decide what to do with the remainder and typically it would just be a type to principal.
The payments.
The, the time period, the pay, the structure will be, the payment will still be the same, the time period, it could be less because of. How many, depending on what's left over.
Because they're paid out in principle.
And it works the other way too. For Hawks Nest, we went a couple months or a couple periods where we just paid the interest because nothing was happening.
Right.
And, um, because Greg was in the gap there, he worked that all out for us. And we haven't engaged anyone specific yet for like him to do that, so. If we don't have someone likely, there will be a lot of responsibility in our office.
Something to be aware of, more work for Georgia. Moving on, uh, fourteen dispersments, uh, section C, retaining should be held at a rate of ten percent of the first fifty percent of the work. Uh, then going over to page twenty-seven, section G, it says. Oh, maybe this is something different, a substantial completion of the project should not exceed the aggregate amount of equal to ten percent of the project cost for each phase. Is there a conflict between, they?
What's the second section you're referencing?
Liquidated damages resulting from failure to achieve substantial completion of the project should not exceed. Average amount equal to ten percent of the budget cost for each one. So LD's liquidated damages won't be more than ten percent of the total cost, so total cost is. Ten million, you're not gonna have liquidated damages and excess.
But that's of each phase.
Of each phase, yeah.
But, okay.
Now, there's, there's liquidated damages that could be levy beyond failures, we need substantial completion. That's certain LD's applied for that specifically, it's.
And then, uh, on G of. Eighteen, which is page twenty-six, um. Penalty is a thousand dollars a day.
You want more, you want less, what, what's your?
Thousand dollars a day on an eleven million dollar project, folks, I mean, that's, that's pennies. I'd say five thousand dollars a day.
You don't see that very often.
See what very often?
Five thousand a day, well, it's something that's, that's.
The hospital.
Yes, yeah, key infrastructure for that thing, yeah.
It's like they can go thirty days over, sixty days over, and, you know.
And that is just for the, uh, event of substantial completion. The Christmas month, there could be other things that are liquidated damages or levied because of, but the most common one is, is being late past completion date. We can talk to Bowen more about that, make those individual to the GMP. They say, see the GMPs for what the LDs will be for that phase or that particular GMP. I don't know if they're open to that, but it's something we could talk to them about and say, listen, when it's. A two hundred and fifty thousand dollar pump, it's a late two thousand dollar day, build a pump to, to the town. Something more than that for when it's multiple millions of work that's going on, if it's gonna get capped at ten percent.
Just bringing up counselors because we've been burned, we're, you know, we're, we're two years behind. You know, I'm looking at incentives to make sure there are incentives.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll just be honest with you right here. I'll just say what we've done, we've done our due diligence to make sure that we don't get our. Asses kicked by this town, by additional fees to us, but we are documented through, I will guarantee that Bowen will do the same. And if you think that they're gonna qualify a thousand dollars out, they're gonna run right up your ass, I promise you. I promise you. They're very good at what they do, and if they, if there's any delay that comes from something out of their control. I guarantee that they will, they'll destroy it, simple. They won't try to, but it's just the way it works.
So it doesn't make any difference whether it's a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, you know?
If there, if there is a legitimate money from the contractor for a delay. And they go past that substantial completion date, it, that's irrelevant, it, it gets thrown out the door. Am I wrong?
Well, you're just saying that the higher the number, the more everybody's gonna pay attention to it. And either bake it into their price.
Yep.
Either bake it into their schedule or document the heck out of every little thing that they can argue, that's not our fault, we're being delayed.
Yeah.
You just turn the volume up on that, we all get along and just do the project level of coordination.
If you start off, if you start at that, if you start at that level upfront, that's how the whole project's gonna go.
We just risen from camp again, that's all, that's all.
I understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
I think a thousand dollars, like you said, for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project for the pumps is adequate. And can we, we can obviously readdress that as each phase of the project.
Well, that's, that's, it's in the master agreement where it says now, but we would need to reorganize that. Uh, I mean, propose that to say, you're saying we do, because we'll have schedule.
Right, and like, I mean, also, let's count these pumpkins, like, yeah.
Well, and here's another thing to think about, right now, we have a project, but we don't have any users. For phase three.
Right.
So if phase one took a little bit longer. If phase two took a little bit longer, or phase three took a little bit longer, how much would it really be out? I mean, it's nice to have covered.
It's, there's a few different.
Penalizing amount at this point with a company that's really, from my standpoint, has gone out of the way to help us out. Some things that I haven't been able to share with you yet, I would say go lightly on that.
Just bringing it up, um, what, what I heard is leave it same.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to page twenty-eight, it says notices, uh. For every change ordered, there's a specific order that needs to be, you know, it's, uh, in writing. Uh, delivered in person or to the developer, to multiple people, whether, whether it burns, uh, Georgia Jones. You know, for every change ordered, that is.
That, that's not for every change order that I think, David, is for any changes that a party wants to make. To the agreement, great sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or even change your address, but yeah, that's, that's how you get notice, you wanna commit this.
Now, folks, uh, on item twenty-four, um, you, you know, if there is a act of acts of God. Uh, or war or floods or hurricanes or earthquakes or epidemics or pandemics, explosions, fires down, da, 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 da. Uh, supply chain issues related to tariffs, this project's potentially gonna be delayed. Or suspended quite substantially, just making sure that.
So this is established with those things.
What?
Contractor can't control.
Yeah, they, I got, I got, I'm, I'm saying. I know Matt's up on it, but, but us, you know.
My son-in-law ran into it with the bridge that got knocked out. They couldn't get any of this stuff turned to Lake Michigan, and they got delayed by four months.
Yeah, and so on item twenty-eight, uh.
And if I can add, this also does say, if there's an event where, let's say. Bowen says, hey, this is a force majeure event that's affecting us, they have to notify you that they've identified one of those within fifteen days. So if there's a.
Yeah.
Supply chain issue, they need to let you know that within fifteen days, if they don't, then.
So that's an example of both sides getting protected there, they understand your point. So that's an example of both sides getting protected there, they understand your point, you can't control that, but at least give us a amount of time, it's fifteen days.
They can't go back.
You can't call.
Get after the fact and be like, oh, well, we didn't, we did this on time.
And then on item twenty eight, I thought it was interesting, dealings with Iran, uh, developer certified, the developer is not engaged in. Any investment activities with Iran, did you know that? It's what? Oh, well, fine, if you're not involved in this. I guess that's it for, for right now, yeah.
Uh, I appreciate you going through that.
Uh, that's just on another note, uh, onto your map over here on page thirty four. Was there? It talks about the service area.
This was a, a map we had pulled from the P R, um, and it's talking about the different areas that could, could contribute to each phase. So I can simplify this figure, it was just the one that we had, that had been most recently been. Uh, put together and submitted to us all of us.
And it just seemed that it might've come up in casual discussion, but it was never vetted really.
Which, the.
The service area, that, the extent of the service area, I know it's been discussed, you know, north of six hundred and. East, east of six hundred, but, you know.
Service area is kinda getting synonymous with maybe a better term, your, your service area for the utility, but then. The served area by this project is.
Stewardship.
And, and then, you know, I'm just going to exhibit, exhibit C, we will get, um. All the service. Names while the personnel.
Correct, yeah, they'll fill that in.
Again.
Michael, are we all clear with the light ways for this?
Uh, we will either procure them or make sure you already have, that's part of our contract to be.
Whether it's a new movement or working with the county or the state inside their highway or road right away, um, that's all included in our scope to go.
What about R E M C, are they with it?
They're part of, they're part of the conversation, that's what we're talking to, so far as we've been very accommodating and interested and.
Who was that, I'm sorry?
Tip mountain, R E M C, they're right off of six hundred.
Yep, right there.
Where we proposed to put the lift station, and they've been very positive.
Anything else on the gateway but B O T project agreement? We, we can't sign that, we need to move on, so their next Thursday, next, the next meeting, you know? Um, I'm gonna.
Actually, the first is on Saturday.
Yeah.
And why did you vote?
Yes, attempt.
No reason. Sorry for.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay, are we able to move on? Uh, I'm gonna move up to this solar discussion because Mark Falehe has been so gracious to wait in line and I said I'd try to get him on earlier. Uh, Mark, I apologize for having you wait around and listen to the discussion, uh, counselors, I went through backs. Through some notes, uh, and minutes, and, uh. On, uh, November thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, we voted to go ahead with the solar project, uh, and at that time, uh. Greg Marks, uh, was suggesting that he has some, might have some leftover funds from, uh. The Hawksness B O T project and, um, I don't know where that stands, so Mark, do you have any updates on that for us?
Uh, can you hear me okay, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so I, I was not able to speak with Greg today, I did reach out to him, so the. The information I have is really as of, uh, early September, so that's the last time that we communicated. And so I, I would say we still need to do a gut check with him, just. Uh, for, for the, uh, the final accounting on the, on the B O T. At the time, early September, he thought that there would be somewhere between, uh, around, around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Perhaps a little bit more, uh, that could be available to be applied against the solar project. Um, so that's the indication that I have, but I'd wanna get an update from him.
Yes, I got it, so, uh, say, say, uh, uh, say, say we have, uh. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, that comes in from that B O T, uh, leftovers, that means we have to.
Right.
A hundred thousand or so, uh, for the rest of the project, uh, I would say, just to be safe, another hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, that we have to come out of, out of our funds wherever they're, wherever they're located, um. Any, any questions for Mark while we're here, well, we can't vote on this or anything, but we can discuss it so that.
Are the costs still the same then?
Cost, I, I would think that for the. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get an updated construction cost because it's been two years, so. Um, we, we should probably redo and, 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 and update the estimate. Just, just for whatever reason, it, it would be the right thing to do, I'm not aware of anything that would. Make a dramatic change, but, but there could have been some potential price increases, and of course. Labor costs, um, you know, increase, but on the, on the other side, sometimes we see, uh, reductions. In equipment costs, so we're gonna have to evaluate the whole thing, so I would say that there will be probably some small nominal change.
Yeah, could you, could you look into that for us?
Sure, absolutely.
No, that's an incurred cost for you and the town, so whatever that would be.
It wasn't, and I pulled up the minutes because I didn't remember it exactly the way that. That Jim remembers it, so I wanted you to read the verbiage that we actually have in the minutes.
I've, I've got it right here too.
Yeah, so, um, what it says is press forward to secure costs. So financing could be arranged, but, um, it isn't exactly worded. You're gonna have to do another motion if you're gonna approve it, because it's not really worded that you're accepting the project at X amount of dollars. You were pressing forward to get costs for financing to see if you could afford it. So it, it will need another motion, absolutely.
But after we get the costs.
Correct.
And I would like to say that, uh, just two points, uh, with a solar project, it freezes our electricity costs. Electricity costs are going up at least four to thirteen percent, and you're depending on the data that you get, so our electrical. Expenses would be frozen for twenty-five years, that is, uh. One thought, and the other thought is, uh, Matt brought up, what's our R O I, return on investment? I would ask, do we ask for R O I on sidewalks? Or any other, other expenses or on a new town hall, well, what's the return on investment on new town hall? You know, I'm just saying, why single out a solar project? Which is one of the few projects that is gonna save the town money, so just thought I'd throw that in. Yes, sir.
I'd like to know why the Excel sheet that you sent out has ties to children's museum in Indianapolis. Is that our data? Somebody else's data.
I, I don't know what you're talking about for certain.
Well. If you open the Excel file, you'll find it real easily.
That document that have that, um, was provided as.
This shit, this she here?
That probably is that twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, maybe. Functions. The, the functions in the cells referred to in another spreadsheet.
Well, without seeing those, without seeing those functions.
Well, this, this is. Jim, these are the attachments that you sent out to the.
Yeah, yeah.
To the council.
Yeah, well, uh, and I got those from Mark, so, uh, Mark, are you hearing that?
Yeah, the only thing I can think of, and again, I don't, I'd, I'd like to see the document, was it a spreadsheet that I sent? Because a lot of times what I'll do is I, I, I will recast, I'll take an old spreadsheet that I recast it. And so it's possible, it could have made some reference to another project, that's, that, that's probably what happened, but. I can validate that.
Any other questions for Mark, any, any questions on solar?
When do you think you can get those proposals back to us?
I, I, I don't think that'll take very long, give me, give me, uh, I'll get with David tomorrow and, and I'd say give me a week or so.
Our next meeting is November tenth, so that's the deadline.
Yeah, okay, well, then, then I need to have it by then.
Well, it would be good to have it.
Got it, yes.
We'd appreciate it, thank you, sir.
No worries.
Any, any questions for Mark? Thank you for being patient and bearing up with the discussion on everything.
No worries, my, my pleasure, thank you.
Are the panels coming from China?
No, no, uh, we're, a, a lot of it, uh, the panels are not, typically are not coming from China, so. Uh, there's a lot of restrictions in terms of, uh, of bringing Chinese content. Uh, into the country, and so there's, uh, there's sensitivity to that, so the, the short answer is no.
Where are they, where are they procured from, that's, I guess.
Uh, it, yeah, different places, so it, it, that, um, they could be from, uh. And I'll have to, depending on which product right now, and again, it's been two years, so it's possible that we. Uh, we might go with a slightly different product, and when I say that, we might have, for example. If the capacity of the panels increased, um, we'll, we'll go with an improved panel. Some of the content, it, it could be domestic, or it could be, uh, Vietnam, or where, or other places. Uh, I'm trying to think Philippines and some other places, but not China.
If you think about it, if you could ask that question, that'd be awesome.
Sure.
Okay.
And also, what about more on the battery? There's no batteries.
Yeah, not, not at this point, it was, uh, if, if, at, not at this level. Uh, that's probably, that may be a future consideration, but no battery at this point.
Any other questions for Mark?
Nope.
Thank you, Mark.
My pleasure, thanks so much, have a great evening.
Adios, uh, do you wanna talk about, uh, salary ordinance, or do, it's seven o'clock, we got here.
Well, uh, Georgia might have some comments about it, I don't know, do you have any comments about, because we need to pass this in November.
Oh, your last opportunity is September, but I wanted you to. Work with it, and the one thing I don't really have is. I mean, what changes we might make to the benefits package, except that vacation. In one of the iterations of the, um. Of the ordinance, the five, over twenty years service for vacation, U T O time. Got dropped off the ordinance, it just kinda stopped at twenty years, and Ron's over twenty years, so I think we need to add that back.
Yeah.
On, and let me calculate what he's owed for those, you know, make, make it retroactive so that he never really lost any. Cause over twenty years, that's five weeks, and it just, it just wasn't on the ordinance.
I guess thank you for staying with us that long.
And the reason, yeah, the reason why I think it's important is because you don't have sick leave, so.
Right.
Each person depends on their. So I tried to incorporate what B J gave you at the last meeting and, um. Uh, depend on him to read over that, make sure that it's represented the way that. He wanted to, or if you still have some thing that you says refer to, you those verify that it represents. We are taking the full time, or not full time. We're taking the number of people in the department over that magical five man.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't really recall now, Kristen said that was five full time, like F T E hours. Or if it was five individuals, I'm kinda losing the detail on that, but. Yes. He, he brought this up after he had set the, um, fifty percent wage increase. And so I don't know that he's got funding for all that.
I, I don't think, but I still think that when, from the conversation from him, I don't think he was actually, I think he just wanted a bigger pool to get a pull from. Not that they'd all be working at the same time, it was just a pool.
They won't, but it's the number of people we have on a salary list.
He would have one part time to work.
Yeah.
Right. That would keep you under that, right, just that, that one, one additional?
Well, he wanted seven. Of the, um, warrant officers and one, so there would be eight people, seven sworn and a line reserve. So if he's not adding hours, he's just adding equipment and education costs then, it's not a good deal for you either.
No.
I thought he was adding hours to them.
No, I don't think he was, I think the way I took it from him was that he was trying to, because they don't have that many people. And there was people that had stuff going on to where he was able to turn around and be able to have two other people that they could have in the mix.
Then one that he wanted to put on.
Yeah, correct, it was just a bigger pool to be able to get somebody that would work the normal hours that were working, is the way I took it. There was something that they needed, it wasn't.
Work the hours, but it would be.
That was the detective that was in the now, absolutely.
Right, right.
Like that, I think it was just to be, for him to be, to have a bigger pool to call from, I mean, I'm. Compared to what you guys do in the firehouse, I mean, you got so many people that only show up, I think, at certain times, only. And I say, well, so I think, I know, I know, I get a lot of repaid either, but the reality of it is, he just needs a bigger pool to be able to. But there's not statutes that limit me, there are statutes that limit the number of. People.
For training needs, uh, or deputies. And once you exceed six, the training needs change, that's part of statute.
Even if you get one, that means the cool eyes, or somebody, I would think that would be even, you know, that. I got more guys called, if we need somebody, if somebody can't work, I mean, from that same point, that's.
You wanna talk about anything else, are we done talking, I'm sorry.
The H R committee, I know you're, right, Joe, you're kinda looped into the other committee that's gonna meet next week, but if that H R committee. Let me look a little bit before the next, um.
Yeah, you tell us when.
Before the ten, so that if there's any kinda, if there's any more changes to make to the salary ordinance that I can.
You wanna do this before the next meeting? Yeah, I do want the case from Saturday.
Oh, okay.
I'll be back.
Wanna do it Friday?
This coming Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do it Friday.
I can do it by, by phone or by Zoom.
No, no, what about Thursday?
I could do it by phone or Zoom.
You could, okay.
We probably get to take a vacation.
I think that's wonderful, where are you guys going, can I ask?
Brands and.
So is he, maybe we should go down there.
Well, I have an extra room, so.
I got a two bedroom.
You can visit your.
I, I, I need breasts after this wedding, so we're good.
Hey, do we wanna talk about anything else on the agenda?
No.
Um, uh, is your on salary ordinance? What is the thoughts about transportation for code officer?
Oh, B J indicated that he's getting quotes for some stuff to present at the.
Okay, that's not any of you, that's, yeah.
That's him, yeah, he's got her. That's him, yeah, he's got her. He doesn't have anything very sure yet, but.
This is not on the agenda, but. Ron and I talked, and you and I talked the other day too. I mean, I apologize to you, because I kind of came a little hot on him the other day, based upon. Um, some work that was being done at Shawnee Ridge. That, uh. The contractor kind of left the mess up there, and there was nothing, uh. They demoed concrete curb and such, and they just put some cones around it, and there was no, uh, barrels or anything that had any reflective. Uh, warning. Apparatuses, I guess, there, so I kind of jumped on him about that, but I'm gonna. Kind of say something to you a little bit more about that. They did a great job, or you did a great job putting barrels out. They still haven't put any, uh, caution tape up around there, and they have a hole that I, I loose, use it loosely. That's a foot deep, that we got kids running around up there, and now they've got, uh, nail stakes out, and they didn't put any caps on anything. So I'll take somebody to follow that hole, or a kid that we run down through their life to the sidewalk, and you kind of got opened ourselves up. I mean, I know we contracted it out, but.
Since we.
Yeah, correct. So, um, we probably need to have that addressed, so you and I, you and I talked the other day too. When we're doing stuff of this nature, I mean, this kind of stuff is not something we need to involve B F N S with, but those a little like that. I mean, if he needs help, I think we need to write some kind of scope up, or even take something up there, you know, some of these smaller things with them. And we need to make sure that we're getting, you know, over, yeah. Not just hiring somebody just because they're cheap, from that standpoint. We get help to. Pretty high standard for what we do, where we go, and that's. I mean, it comes with a, it comes with a cost, unfortunately, but it is what it is from that, keeps everybody's liability to them really. But, but, you know, they have nail stakes up there now that are, they don't have caps on or anything, so. We need to make sure that that kind of stuff takes care, taken care of.
Who was putting those in?
Or officially teaching.
Oh, okay, I'm like.
I mean, it really doesn't matter who it is from that standpoint, it's just the fact that we just need to make sure that we have some kind of standard that we're. We're holding as a town, so we don't open ourselves up for a little bit, some way. I, the only reason I jumped his ass was because I drove through there and I about got K O'd from a vehicle because they were going up around it, and. I can just see somebody driving in that at some point in time, and they left the concrete on the road. Wasn't a lot, couple five gallon buckets, but the bottom line is, somebody drives through there and runs over it, who are they gonna call first?
Yeah.
Those busters.
Yeah, right. Something that we need to be aware of, that we make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Anything else you wanna talk about? Uh, one, one announcement, Michael Budd is retiring from the, uh, R D C, so, uh, on end of the year, so. That will be. We have to find a replacement. Maybe, just, just putting that out there, whatever.
I'd like to mention to a German.
Sorry. So moved, thank you.